The time is 6:02 PM. This January 22, 2024, we're meeting at the Indiana School District Board of Trustees. It's goodbye called the Board. But the minute showed that all Board members are present and that this meeting has been called and afforded to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code of Character, 911. All items that will be discussed and were voted on this evening have been posted and as required by state law. I want to extend a warm welcome to everyone here tonight. We are pleased that you have taken this time this evening to join us. On behalf of the Indiana State Board, we are pleased that you have joined us and we celebrate, as we celebrate achievement, set goals, district reports, budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make positive decisions. We are not here to make management decisions. We're to solve problems of individuals. Management is irresponsible, as pretended. This is a public meeting, not a meeting of the public. As our guests welcome, Derek, listen again, we are pleased that you have taken this time to join us this evening. Thank you for your interest in the Indiana State School District. And we now ask some of your cell phones at this time, please rise with the invitation to be given. Sharp, remain standing, but please just honor the Texas flag, be led by the church.
Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the opportunity to work for the best of our kids in the district. And I just thank you for the privilege of serving this system. God, I just ask for your wisdom tonight as we discuss this issue, so to serve our people, I just ask you to put everything you do, loving Father, and seeing us all in your presence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of the Free States, a one nation under God, indivisible, with every single justice for all. I am the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, a one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right, item number two on the agenda is recognition's presented by Chuck Edwards.
Yes, sir. Now we've got three schools with us here, and the first one that we will be recognizing is Kirkland Elementary and Mr. Preet Spreng.
Come on down.
Thank you for having us here tonight, and thank you for letting us reschedule. We were supposed to be here in December, but we've got to be here tonight, so thank you for that. So on behalf of Kirkland Elementary, Assistant Principals Derek One and Angie Stanley, we want to recognize these four wonderful individuals here tonight. We're going to start with our District Jensen. Jensen is a fourth grader at Kirkland Elementary, and he's just an amazing individual, and so we asked a couple of his teachers a little about him, so here's what they said, okay? So Ms. Alvera, she describes Jensen as a marvelous fourth grader who is always willing to help anyone in need of help. He's a quick learner who's very determined and pushes himself to strive for excellence. There is absolutely no doubt that he will continue to strive not only as a kind-hearted individual, but also academically. Ms. Mendoza, another teacher, has had the privilege of being Jensen's teacher in both third and fourth grade. She says that he's shown much improvement during that time. Throughout the obstacles he's faced, he's continued to strive and has shown that everything is possible by always keeping a positive attitude, helping and pleasing others. He's always ready to face every challenge and give it his all in order to prosper. Jensen's a great student, and he deserves to be recognized for his achievement and excellence as a model for his family.
Next up is Ms. Jenna Seibens. Ms. Seibens is an amazing parent in our faces class. And, oh my, wait a second. So as a highly motivated and compassionate education parent professional, Jenna Seibens stands out as a pillar of support in the classroom. With Jenna's unwavering commitment to fostering and nurturing and inclusive learning of our students, Jenna has become an indispensable asset to the Kirkland family. Jenna is exceptional in working with students with special needs that require behavioral support. Recognizing that each student is of need, Jenna's support to meet the specific needs of each behavioral student is outstanding. Whether through one-on-one sessions, behavior interventions, or implementing specialized techniques, she ensures that every student receives the attention and guidance necessary for success. Jenna exemplifies the qualities of an outstanding education parent professional, a compassionate, skilled, and dedicated professional, making a significant difference in the lives of students and the broader educational community. She's studying to become a certified teacher, so I'll be hiring her soon. We cannot wait to see her grow and prosper.
Ms. Isabella Aparicio is a food service assistant in our cafeteria at Kirkland Elementary, and she is a pleasure to see the students love coming in, see her every single day, and even when life is tough, she's there, and she has a smile on her face. Ms. Candy, our Kirkland Cafeteria Manager, says Ms. Aparicio not only provides the best service to our school, but she does so with a smile. Her smile is so contagious that it brightens the day of many of the students she interacts with as they walk through the breakfast and lunch line each day. She loves talking to the students and making them smile as well. She also spreads joy around the kitchen with her lovely smile, her vibrant dance moves, and beautiful singing. Isabella's a hard worker and great to be around. It's a blessing to have her as part of the Kirkland family, and we greatly wish her good luck.
Miss Anai Pineda, I have to get the right pronunciation every time. In the realm of education, there are exceptional individuals who transcend the role of an educator, and Anai Pineda is undoubtedly one. Her impact extends far beyond its confines in the classroom, reaching into the hearts and minds of every student fortunate enough to be under her guidance. Anai possesses an innate ability to transform the mundane into the extraordinary, making each lesson a captivating journey of discovery. With boundless enthusiasm, patience, and unwavering belief in the potential of every learner she's got thirty in her class, she creates an environment where curiosity thrives and intellectual growth becomes a shared adventure. Anai not only imparts knowledge, but also instills a passion for learning that lasts until I'm done. Her dedication, empathy, and genuine concern for the well-being of each student make them not just educators, but a mentor and a source of inspiration. We are honored to have Anai as our special education manager.
And I'm just going to recognize our custodian. We were coming to December, and our custodian, Ms. Maria Guevez, was a Kirkland recognized because she retired at Christmas break, so I just want to give her a shout out and hope she's enjoyed her retirement.
So thank you so much for having us here to give part of you, because we have amazing people here tonight. Before I get started, I want to say that I absolutely nothing else to cry to, but to put on my Dr. Joseph Junis, originally finished in Naptime, and Mr. J. Smith. So, of course, I think I recognize these amazing students, and I want to take a moment to just point out how iron, she was the sharpest iron in Pine Valley. So this kind of reminds me of former coaches, kind of reminds me of signing day, right, where you get to like display your very best, you know, that you make nature around each other, you know, get to where you are really. So I would always make sure to save a space front and center for my whole courtroom, just to see what, you know, what they can accomplish, what they was part of. And so if you are here from Pine Valley, just stand for a minute. Please do take care of the women, and they are here to be also a source of recognition. So the only reason we have such excellent students and staff members who we recognize this evening is because of the hard work, dedicated individuals that we get to work with daily. And also, the Board, I want to take a moment to thank you for your unwavering support. You guys have been everything that we needed at all times, so thank you for that. Okay, we're going to start with Ms. Catherine Johnson. She's our special education parent professional. Her story and her passion really is what makes her so fantastic. It's what makes her a life changer on our campus and why she creates opportunities for students on our campus. Ms. Thomas, our Department Chair at Mrs. Santa Barbara. Ms. Johnson has made such a positive impact on students at Pine Valley. She goes above and beyond to ensure that each student meets their full potential despite their disability. Ms. Johnson has a heart of pure gold and inspires students to believe in themselves and never give up on their goals. Ms. Johnson, your hard work and dedication can go unnoticed. Your passion for the future growing as an educator is why I'm so grateful to have you here at Pine Valley. Thank you for going that mile and making such a difference. You are truly amazing.
All right, next we have Ms. Veronica Galbert. Ms. Veronica Galbert, come on down. Your passion for your students and your colleagues and your true passion for happiness is why we feel honored to be in the NIGU training. You are constantly searching for solutions. You are so eager to help. You're innovative, you're a self-starter. If there's a need on the student list, you are two steps ahead already looking for a solution, and who can be a part of that solution with you? I love that we've been able to have difficult conversations, but because you came with an open heart and an open mind and the trust that you need, that what we thought would be a disappointment has been truly a blessing to the campus. And so I thank you for consistently building trust relationships. We're constantly learning, and you're constantly teaching, your students and me at Pine Valley. So you truly make this a better place to be, so thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Maria Flores, and I just really, really appreciate you, and I want to make sure you understand how much we appreciate you. So I'm going to tag in Ms. Chanda Torres to help me out with this.
Okay, thank you. Maria, eres un bendición para nosotros. Es una persona muy amable y trabajadora, muy trabajadora. Mes flores, ella siempre saluda a todos los niños y a nosotros con una sonrisa y no importa el trabajo que tienes que hacer, lo haces con una sonrisa y con felicidad. Ella siempre pone a los estudiantes primero y ella cuida el edificio como si era su casa. No podemos hacer eso sin ustedes y somos muy agradecidos teniendo en nuestro equipo. Gracias. Muchas gracias.
Next, we have Ms. Cynthia Tope. She's our child nutrition manager. Awesome. This woman right here is so organized, so patient, and remembers everything, like even all the things that I forget. She is on top of it. You, like, anytime you develop schedule change, testing day, you already know how these half lunches were going to be. There is no way that you can run so smoothly, and you do all that with a smile on your face, no matter what. So if it's me running down the hallways trying to beat the bell to let you know that kids are coming, you are never worried about it. You always have solutions to your own questions, and you just bring them to me, and you always have solutions to my questions. So I appreciate where you do, your kind spirit, and your joy, just it not only feels like after him, but feels like him. Thank you so much for everything you've ever seen and for us.
Now we move on to the students. Our fine art student is Catherine Marge. It's been amazing to watch her grow over the years, but I want to share the words of her band director, Mr. Cody Brooks. He said that Catherine is an outstanding trumpet player with the abilities and leadership that extend beyond her three years of playing. She's always excited to learn new abilities and refine her skills. She has come a long way in the last few years and is a shining example for the Pine Valley fans. In her first year sitting in the win ensemble, I knew she was a special student. Her dedication for learning music is unmatched. As a seventh grader, Catherine placed seven out of forty-nine trumpet players at Region Thirty-Three Band Auditions. This year, she continued to achieve by placing first out of sixty-six trumpet players at the Region Band Audition. I'm going to repeat that for those of us that. She placed first out of sixty-six trumpet players at the Region Band Audition. Her performance also earned her a seat in the Region Orchestra. In this classroom, Catherine is a leader for the band and an example of having an outstanding band student. She's a cornerstone for our UIL participation and continuously shows off her skills through solos and her music. Catherine is a leader and a prime example of our VIP mindset. She's valuable, she's inquisitive, her inquisitiveness and her perseverance are what makes her so great. We are so very proud of her and honored to have her in our program and on our campus.
Next up, Emma Reinhold is our CTE student. I had not tended to talk to her before this, and I just, it was so cool to see her passion, how much she absolutely loves anything that she's faced with, and how important it was for her to not only be in position one day, but to make sure those that helped her along the way made her proud, specifically Coach Washington. So Emma Reinhold always gives a hundred percent and steps up when needed. She is a hard worker, always gives it her all, and continues to show resilience when difficult things come her way. Not only does she finish her work on time, but she goes above and beyond on her work, and she's not afraid to ask questions that she doesn't understand, and when she's completed her work, she doesn't hesitate to help others. Emma has a true appreciation for learning new things and wants to be positioned when she grows up. She is a great example of what our VIP mindset is all about, and wants to make sure she makes Coach Washington proud. Thanks.
Last but not least, we have our student athlete, which is Aaron Aguilar. He is definitely what you want to see in the classroom and on the field, in the hallways. He's a leader, he leads by example, and he doesn't have to raise his voice to do it. Whoever's going to watch you and follow you, it's pretty amazing to see the great things that you've already wrought for our campus. All of our students at Pine Valley are stars, this is from your search, but Aaron Aguilar is a student star. He is an humble young man that is respectful to any adult he comes in contact with, as well as his peers. He is the type of student that will go out of his way to help anyone. Aaron strives daily to not be outworked by anyone, and not only in athletics, but also academically. Aaron, you are truly an example of what a sober student should be and an asset to Pine Valley. Your teachers and coaches are extremely proud of you. Keep up the good work.
Okay, thank you again for having us. It's my pleasure to present to you our White Oak Warriors. And I'm going to start with our students, and I'm going to start with Ms. Lucero Morano. She is our fine art student and from our top band. She embodies excellence in both skill and leadership. Her exceptional musical powers evident through her achievement of making third chair both for Region Thirty-Three, All-Region Band, and All-Region Orchestra. She's a double duo here, a testament to her dedication and power. Beyond her individual accomplishment, Lucero's role as the leader in the classroom is exemplary. She consistently sets the standard for her peers, demonstrating a strong work ethic, commitment to improvement, and a collaborative spirit. Her ability to inspire and motivate others makes her an invaluable asset to the band, creating an environment of excellence where every student strives to reach their full potential. Lucero's combination of musical excellence and leadership qualities truly makes her the epitome of a fine art band student. And when I called each of them down, we gave them special invitations tonight, Lucero just warmed my heart. She went into tears and said, "I'm on the school board on Instagram." So she is like a student that you want, I'm telling you, like any mom and I mother, just tears, like, you don't even know how much it means to her. It moved me, so thank you, Lucero, and congratulations.
Next up is Brandy Gore. She is our CTE representative, and she's an exceptional individual and a remarkable eighth grade student at White Oak Middle School. Not only does she excel as an outstanding representative for CTE, but she's also accomplished athlete, a sincere friend, and a role model for her peers. Brandy's unwavering determination and unwavering commitment to her many activities are admirable traits that we all should strive to emulate. However, her success does not come without hard work and perseverance. Brandy stays focused on all of her endeavors, whether she is traveling to a livestock judging contest with Ms. Lynch or dominating the volleyball courts. She gives every task her all. She's a responsible, respectful, and honorable individual who goes above and beyond for those around her. Brandy is an inspiring leader in the classroom who always demonstrates a true character of success. She's committed to achieving her goals and overcoming any obstacle that may come her way, proving her dedication to winning the game of life. We extend our gratitude to Brandy for representing the CTE department so exceptionally well. Hands down, we know that she's going to have more success in her future endeavors, and congratulations, Brandy. Okay, next I'd like to present to you Mr. Harvey Myers. He is our athlete student selected, and, but he was very shocked when I told him he was our athlete. He said, "Please," and said, "I'm going to tell you why," okay? So he's a triple threat. He dances, he acts, he sings, and he's very talented on cross country. He's so talented, he has a smile on his face, he has a bright future ahead of him, he's polite, he's kind, he excels in theater, dance, and athletics. He's also a library office aide. He performs every task with diligence and care. His peers enjoy having him in class, and he not only does all of that, he has time to excel academically as well. He's always on task, he asks great questions, he's a leader in the classroom, both on and off the stage, on the field. Passion, joy, I mean, I could go on and on about Mr. Harvey, but he really just embodies all the characteristics of a warrior. He's respectful to teachers and students, always is safe, wears his ID without being reminded, has integrity personally and academically, and demonstrates empathy for others. I've personally seen him lean over to others and say, "Are you okay?" He's just a joy and a kind spirit with an ever-present smile. And so just thank you, Harvey, and to Lucero and Brandy, that we're just what we wish every warrior could be, so thank you.
Okay, next up is Ms. Legina Plankton. She's our child nutrition specialist, and Ms. Debbie said Legina started at White Oak in twenty nineteen. So she has been cooking and serving food with such joy. Ms. Elizabeth says, "You're the first woman, all for help, and always present, hardly ever has missed a day of work, just loves helping and serving our kids, and so we appreciate your heart, and we notice you, we value you, we respect you." Thank you, Ms. Legina Plankton.
Next up is Ms. Melissa Ward. Ms. Ward is our headmistress again, and she is recovering from shoulder surgery, God bless her. So she's been paying tonight for this honorable award. She runs a very good crew. She's always available and willing to help whenever needed. I never have to worry about moms because she takes care of business. She's kind, she's also funny, courteous, and helpful. Just hard work and dedicated, names to please, and she's a very effective communicator with her team and always asks how she can help, and I thank you for having a servant heart and a warrior spirit. Thank you, Ms. Ward.
Next up is Ms. Jennifer, which is our silver. And so she's a wealthy face to White Oak families. Being the registrar, she exhibits passion, patience, and understanding under all special circumstances. The face that you want of White Oak when people walk in just to give that extra royal tour. She goes above and beyond to find all the answers to help our new families. She makes her experience easy as a transition and true asset. The best thing about her, she's always willing to pitch in and help for anything asked and truly loves our school, so thank you. We are very grateful for you, Ms. Silver.
And relax, but not leave. It's Ms. Cindy Larson. She's our teacher. And so I just, I tell you, everybody in the school wants to go into Ms. Larson's class and see the magic that's happening. She's prepared, she has exemplary social studies lessons, Texas history come alive and runs a model classroom. And I asked one of her mentees, because she has a couple of young coaches to pass on her boys this year that are just brand-new teachers, and so she's a mentor to several of them. And one of them said, "Ms. Larson has been a fantastic mentor teacher for me this year and set me up for success, and without her, I would have been totally alone. Anytime I need a tip or some encouragement or need to observe anything, I know that I can go to her and get whatever I need." And our social studies department chair says, "I don't know where to start, because Ms. Larson has so many wonderful qualities as an educator. She's organized, ambition, thorough in her planning, creative, and takes her job seriously as an educator. She knows her content and her craft. She produces lessons, assessments, and her mission is very well deserved." Thank you, Ms. Larson, for being the awesome warrior teacher of the year.
All right, one final recognition and our last sprint to make our way back up to the podium. January is School Board Recognition Month in Texas, it's always been. It's just tradition, it's been around as long as I can remember. And so as with tradition, our principals just wanted to come say a word to our school board. It is truly a thankless job, and like Ms. Polly, I thought you put a great dollar here when we needed some support, and we needed it at the time we needed it. And so I know our principals, they just wanted to come just to give you all the word and encouragement, and I want to recognize you guys, so Ms. Brent, all your time.
We see what a shame it's coming. We greatly, greatly appreciate you guys and all that you do and your dedication for our campuses. So it is with great pleasure and profound gratitude that I say before you this evening that we have all the campus principals to express our heartfelt thanks to the dedicated members of our esteemed school boards. In every committee, in every community, there exists a backbone, a force that propels progress and shapes its future. For us, that force is embodied in the tireless efforts of our school board members. The night was gathered not just to acknowledge their hard work, but to celebrate the profound impact that they've had on the lives of our students. Our school board members, through their unwavering commitment, have become architects of possibility. Their dedication goes far beyond the meeting rooms and the administrative tasks. It reaches into the very fabric of our educational land. institutions and fostering an environment where every child can be overcome. Behind every success story, every milestone achieved, there is a guiding hand. Our school board members are those that will be hands. You navigate the complexities of education with wisdom, navigate challenges with resilience, and always keep the well-being of our students at the forefront. To you, our school board members, we say thank you for your dedication, for your sacrifice, and for your unyielding belief in the power of education. Your hard work sets the standard of excellence, and your vision propels us toward a future where our students not only succeed, but flourish. As we express our gratitude this evening, let us also renew our commitment to the shared vision of shaping your minds and nurturing the leaders of tomorrow. Together, as a united front, we can continue to make a difference in the lives that most matter most to our students. In closing, I extend our deepest appreciation and admiration to each member of the school board. Your service is a beacon of inspiration, and your legacy will endure the hearts and mind of those who watch you. Thank you.
and true success and exceptional organizations. And so I hope to express my gratitude for your daily efforts and further our shared vision and the commitment, persistent hard work, administrative instrumental, making New Caney ISD an outstanding environment. Your dedication, loyalty, and unwavering effort serve genuine inspirations, and thank you, really, each one of our board recipients. Thank you to our principals for being frontline, and to our students. Item three on the agenda is open forum. The board will now hear comments from those persons who have signed up to speak. We have two of them who've signed up. Start with Mr. Christian Sederbo. Before you get started, so we have a brief here for a formal statement. The board encourages comments from citizens of the district, board employees, anyone wishing to be considered an individual or as a representative of the group, may do so at this time. Board asks that comments pertaining to public education issues can be no longer than five things. Remember, the board may not discuss any issues that are not posted on our agenda. An issue that is mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda. The board will defer discussion until the appropriate time, if there is need. In addition, the board is adopting policies that are designed to secure the most administrative level, impromptu, and equitable resolution complaints and concerns. Policies are available on the district website, newcaneyisd.org. As sharp as will the time for you and your time will start just beginning.
Good evening, members of the board and everyone in attendance tonight. My name is Kristen Sederbo, and I want to speak to you tonight about a district issue regarding SportCast Media. To be clear, I don't have to speak for anyone else but myself. SportCast Media has become an integral part of New Caney ISD athletics and has bridged the gap between the athletics program and the community. This year, they have provided one-of-a-kind sports coverage for every New Caney high school. Our area has lacked consistent media coverage for years. It is especially inspiring to see them step in to give recognition to our school, programs, and athletes in a way that has been missing for quite some time. As we started to watch all the coverage last year, beginning at New Caney and Porter High School, I could keep up with my friends and family, whose children played multiple sports. As my daughter started her freshman year at West Fork High School, we hoped the school would provide coverage there this year as well. West Fork had just begun getting coverage in December, and now we risk losing our coverage after one month and the entire district's coverage for the future. Who made this decision? Were the coaches asked if they found value of what SportCast Media provided? Because they were the ones who asked for SportCast Media to be this. Was this decision made in the back? Nobody knows, because anyone who has sent emails hasn't received a reply back. This problem needs to be addressed, because there seems to be no responsibility nor accountability for this decision nor any attempt to address our complaints. NCSP Athletics set a record amount of scholarship money by generating over $1 million in scholarships wrapped this year. Is it a coincidence that this all happened since SportCast has PSC done their coverage? Maybe, maybe not, but you can't say that they had zero effect on it, zero impact, especially if you've been following what they do for our children, for our kids, for our athletes since the beginning. SportCast Media has submitted a proposal to the district athletic directors in hopes of building a long-term relationship with the district. The proposals were recently declined and not given an opportunity to go through the competitive fit process. I have reached out to Chris Orzy to get the proposal details. While he wouldn't give me the exact contact details to speak with you tonight, he did give you critical services that would have been offered. The proposal contained long-term and short-term options based on the district's needs that could be added to or taken away from here. The services include three for toddlers, one for each high school, providing game photos or videos, game updates, articles free of charge for all the athletic programs. This offer would include photos of cheerleaders, dance teams, bands, JR or TC, and anyone involved in the Friday night football games. So, the reach of this service extends further than the athletic programs in themselves. Team and individual photos, which parents usually have to purchase, would be free of charge. That saves me money as a parent of five children, two of which are multi-sport athletes. So I know how much that would save the district's parents in all. We all worry about the effects of social media on our children. We worry about what they see, learn, and watch. SportCast has a platform of over 15,000 local people, college coaches, college scouting coordinators, and recruiting strategists with colleagues. So we have this one positive social media that provides a platform to recognize our district, our programs, our athletes, to various audiences and districts. Does the district have found value in that? When the athletes see their names posted for outstanding achievement, scoring that winning touchdown, or hitting that game-winning shot, these things mean so much more than the play. Being recognized for their hard work and feeling like they are being seen and applauded by our community members goes a long way for some mental health. And SportCast provides that platform for them to be recognized. However, I have noticed that no district media personnel are present at any West Fork or other New Caney ISD games I've attended, including the New Caney ISD tournament. Even this past weekend, the New Caney Cup, which featured all the district's middle-school basketball teams playing each other, was not covered. This is highly discouraging. As a parent of athletes in this district and over 300 other patrons, I have signed a petition requesting that our athletes receive the media coverage they deserve. This service is important, not only for the coverage of current athletes, but also for the future athletes who will be coming through this district. I want the board to discuss this matter with all the parties involved and come to an agreement that benefits of who matters the most, the athletes. The district provides itself on the district of innovation, and you have turned down one of the most innovative board-keeping plans from which this district has already benefited.
Thanks to speak is Mr. Chris Orzy.
Good evening, members of the board, administrative staff, and everyone in attendance. I'm Chris Orzy, I'm owner of SportCast Media. I've been working with the district alongside them for the last year and a half. Due to my comments, I would like to give the opportunity to the board to think my comments to a closed session because of the nature behind the financials of my comments and the other issues. When I started here at New Caney ISD, I was grateful for the opportunity that I was given. Over the past year and a half, we've evolved and really began to find our footing and recognizing, just the same way we recognize the people here tonight, for outstanding achievements. I do that several times a week, okay? And the reason why I put this proposal together for the district is because this year I ran across a lot of issues as far as income. People not being able afforded the opportunity to buy the photos. Now, the athletics administration and myself have come to an agreement on the price of the photos, and so it's something that we both set together that people still can't afford. So I put together a proposal where the athletics department would cover several items, including game photos, game videos, team photos, all that's free of charge, where the kids don't have to get singled out because they didn't get photos, or, you know, they didn't make the front page, so to speak. So there's been a little, I haven't personally been involved too much with the social media, but I definitely wanted to clear up some misinformation as far as the financials behind the contract. I'm 100% transparent in the costs, and like Mr. Sederbo said, I did put together a long-term option and short-term options. Now, when I had my meeting with the athletic administration, I told them, "This is what I believe the future could be, but let's not worry about that now. Let's look at your board. Okay, let's start there, and we can add to, or we can take away from, based on the feedback that we're getting from the community, from the board, from the administration." And so I did want to put out there tonight, year one did contain three photographer videographers that will be on SportCast Media to attend all home athletic events, and that provides photos and videos of the game, post-game interviews. And we would continue our coverage, and all of it would be shared to the athletes, the parents, the programs, the district for free. SportCast Media will provide updates and written game recaps at the end of each game that we cover. We will also travel with the teams that make the playoffs, whether it's to Nakadoshas or to spring for a playoff football game. We're the ones there covering it for the district. We'll provide the team photos, and individuals' and team photos, and the senior banners, free of charge to the athletic programs. We would also be covering athletic events such as home game, homecoming, senior nights, banquets, signing days, and all those photos will be for free. One other thing that we wanted to implement was an internship program where we can have students come work with us and we can teach them. We have a teacher on staff that's certified, that can build a curriculum. We've had several issues across high schools this year where students were given, kicked off the field because they were taking photos or somebody else that was trying to give it for free. We have students that got criminal trespass warnings that are now no longer allowed at athletic events. If we can institute this internship program, we can eliminate those issues and give them a structure to actually learn and apply in sports. The total cost of that, which is what people really want to know, is $175,000, which is $58,300 per person, per photographer. The district personnel, the average salary with media relations, is $73,500, which would save the district $16,000 per person to outsource us rather than having to hire within. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming to speak. Item number four on the agenda is the superintendent report presented by Mr. Goff. All right, item number five on the agenda is reports and proposals to board members. Do we have any reports, do you have proposals to report? Item number six on the agenda is the consent calendar, consisting of consideration of minutes, consideration of financial reports, consideration of purchasing reports, and consideration of personnel reports. Are there any questions? Will we further discussion with the items? Do we have, so do we have a motion on the consent calendar consisting of the consideration of minutes, consideration of financial reports, consideration of purchasing reports, and consideration of personnel reports? We have a motion by Mr. Trump and a second by Mr. Turner. There may be further discussion, I hope, and take them. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying, "Hey." Any votes, any other standing? All right, motion carries. All right, item number seven on the agenda is consideration of attendance rezoning, presented by Mr. Flankier.
Good evening. Back in the room, the board has discussed potential rezoning due to the growth of the Tavola subdivision. We would like to rezone portions of Peach Creek subdivision, Dogwood, we'd like to rezone parts of Roberts Road area to Oakley Elementary. We'd also like the new Tavola subdivision to go to New Caney Elementary. And also Valley Ranch has had some growth with some apartment complexes, so we'd like to move the apartment complex on 59, which is Montgomery High's back in the two-quarter, so the areas don't have to cross 59 every day to get to school. So the kids that are affected, Dogwood gained about 85 kids, Oakley began about 45 kids, New Caney Elementary gained 70 plus whatever the house is with, Tavola West subdivision, which we don't. They're being built, and no one's going to be at this point. And that would take 200 students off Tavola, that would take them from 1,070 down to 1,700. Valley Ranch, Porter Elementary, Porter Elementary became about 85 students, Valley Ranch will result in 85, but the Tavola's in the 800 range, maybe around 900. This is, we're growing, y'all know this, and we're growing this, but the Tavola group, that area has grown more quickly than we anticipated. Mrs. Kelly is doing a great job with 1,070 kids and adding new kids every day, so if you have anything to do to alleviate that, we appreciate it. Any questions on that? To give you background, we did have the last one for me to be posting next, and the scripters at the camps that were affected, Dr. Powers put on a Let's Talk link on the website for our rezoning. We had about four parents reach out, one negative, one positive, and then two clarifications, and that was the adjustment of Let's Talk. The camp's president's not calling with any parents, if we're ready to, you know, be truly upset, so at this point, I think this is the message the district is giving this group.
Like you explained, how do you determine the locations they're going to?
Sure, we looked at, for example, all you know, each one of these, the Peach Creek one, the parent was excited about the move, actually told me, she drives from our neighborhood at Peach Creek, past Dogwood, they get to Tavola, so she was excited, she was not personal, which makes logical sense. We looked at Montgomery High's and for Valley Ranch, strictly because we're trying to use it to get out as our barrier for elementary's, to say, "Parents, go back and forth, there's a lot of friends," thus, thus have a lot of effect. Second one, the Roberts Road area, I was told historically, the back and forth between New Caney Elementary and Tavola, but they're getting closer, coming out of Rodney Court Oakley, Oakley's size, that's why we chose Oakley as the New Caney, because at this point we don't know the Tavola West. And then the third, the Tavola West, where including the negative ride around to We're including the neighborhood right around Tavola, the Spears Drive, Hughes Drive, Little Sharon Road, and Forest Drive, just north of the new neighborhood. We're trying to keep that 59, and that was strictly the distance. And the Caney is going to, the Tavola West, where the New Caney Elementary complex is going to be built in two years, I believe. So it just makes sense for them to go that direction. And what we did to turn on the kids, I got with Mr. Kasperer's department, the teams department. It was games with staff for staffing. And we looked at those kids and see they were moving, which would be the least amount of staffing changes and teams issues without a wonder of things. This was the best route. I did not make this decision myself. I was going to clarify that. We have a lot of them. Any other questions?
Chris Dorsey, everyone, please take a seat. Can you go back through a little bit on the notification efforts we made and use them to put up some information in schools?
So basically, what we did, we took the maps of the affected areas and placed them in the schools that the parents are in currently. So we put them up in Valley Ranch and then Tavola, with the scripter in English management. And with the link, they know the Let's Talk, we talked about it. And we have the school. I felt the receptionist, if they had any questions, we could direct them to that. So that may, we have a documented number of questions and concerns. At this point, I said it was less than five. We didn't really got any. Phone qualified, I think Mr. Kasperer had one. She was the same way that did Let's Talk. So we were off. She was certified on her first street, so it was fine.
Could we post it on the district website as well?
Mm-hmm. It's on the district website. It's up to 60. So we've got about two months to retake. And just so you know, that up, you see if you're getting next year, it's time to talk about the other side of the street.
I think a total of four responses from that.
Any other questions and concerns? Are there any other questions? All right, so we have a motion on the consideration of attendance resuming. I have a motion by Mr. Trump and a second by Mr. Turner. There being no further discussion, I hope we take all those in favor of placing on there. If you can, say aye. All right, any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, motion carries. Item number eight on the agenda is consideration of approval to award construction contract for Highland Elementary School. It's project 107, 2023, to gamble construction presented by Mr. Turner.
Good evening. I'd like to recommend that you consider approving the game construction to build building number 12, Highland Elementary. We took bids on the 18. We gambled a little bid on pricing and remained our little bid after your questions.
Do we have other little bids or was the other decided factor?
We, it's a process that has a, it's a matrix that we use. And 50% of that is worth the price on the matrix. The other 50% comes from a proposer's experience and reputation, the quality of their goods and services, whether they have the financial capability to perform the work, their proposed personnel that they can use on the job, and their safety record, their ability to complete past projects on time. I know that the district would use it before and through other districts as well. And the last part was their performance in responding to the climate. And all that's the immediate evaluation process. Those that buy an apartment, they score, they do score evaluation on it based on this criteria. The architect also scores the evaluation sheet based on this criteria. And there's also a reference questionnaire that goes out with references that they listed on your pretty good proposal. And we take that into our considerations as well.
Two questions. How many bids did we receive and then how many people performed the scoring?
Starting from the second one.
How many people performed the scoring, like the scoring measures?
So for the elementary school, we received four bids. And as far as the number of folks that completed the evaluations, there's five individuals that completed the evaluation.
Any other questions for further discussion? Actually, we have a motion.
A move to approve awarding construction contract for Highland Elementary School project 107, 2023, to gamble construction and delegate authority to superintendent or his designate to negotiate, finalize, and execute all documents related to that.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Trump and a second by Mr. Turner. There being no further discussion, I hope we take all those in favor of placing on there. Raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. All right, I'm now on the agenda is consideration of approval to award construction contract for Caney High School Athletics and CTE Building to Purcell Construction presented by Mr. Turner.
Thank you. I'd now like to ask you to consider approving Purcell Construction Incorporated, build a new CTE building, and extra free clear bids. Okay. At the end of that, we received one bid from Purcell. That was our one and only bid. And so the natural thing to do would be that, then they did it. But that's not, we didn't just take it at face value and approve them, went through our evaluation process. And we look at market values, talking to our fire architects and other architects that we're working with. We fill out the number they came back with. It was a very reasonable and comfortable number for the project. As far as filing, we had one. We had three that were interested. But when it came down to it on bid day, we only had one that turned in a ton of bid. We are comfortable with the bid from a construction standpoint and from the price point that they put in for the project. I don't feel like it's a, they weren't aware that they were the only bid and it had $2 million of the project that they put in. There was competition about the process. At the end of the day, we only had one show up and bid that. We are aware that there were other projects that had been bidding since then and throughout the day. And from what we understand and talking to the other interested parties, they were in contention or opposed a little bid on some of the other work, closer to home for those companies. And that's our understanding of why they did not submit a bid at the end of the day.
All right, any other questions for this discussion? All right, is there a motion?
A move to approve awarding construction contract for New Caney High School Athletics and CTE Building, project 101-2023 to Purcell Construction. Delegated authority to superintendent or his designate to negotiate, finalize, and execute all documents related to the contract.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Turner and a second by Mr. Turner. There being no further discussion, I hope we take all those in favor of placing on there. Raise your hand and say aye. All right, any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Item number 10 on the agenda is close the board to knowledge or in closed session for some following text. Item 074, for the purpose of personnel matter, government vote. Item 071, for attorney constation, the government vote. For land development and real estate issues. Any action as a result of the closed session discussion will take place after the board re-competes the open meeting. The board is closed to meet at 8:30 PM. And we will now re-continue an open session. Item number 11 on the agenda is consider discussing purchase of 32 acres of real property for a future campus or other district facilities. Delegated authority to complete and execute all documents related to the purchase as discussed in closed session. Mr. Turner presented by Mr. Turner.
Yes, sir. This is a piece of property in the Collins Development that we've been working with. We anticipate this to be a future middle school site. As approved, our voters in the 2023 bond, we attach the house to it a little now so we can close that transaction and get work on, get a school there.
Are there any questions for further discussion? Do we have a motion?
A move to approve the purchase of approximately 32.8 acres of real property located in Montgomery County, Texas, and to delegate authority to complete and execute all documents related to the purchase to superintendent or his delegate.
I have a motion by Mr. Turner and a second by Mr. Trump. There being no further discussion, I hope we take all those in favor of placing on there. Raise your hand.
Aye.
All right. All opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. All right, item number 12 on the agenda is future discussion topics. Delay, this will be for future items. We feel that we need to be, there's to be more ideas, we need to be discussing. Future, to be placed on future agendas, and so there being future matters that you would like to consider possible replacement on the future agenda. There being no further business?
That's okay. I'd like to have something placed on a future agenda, not necessarily next month, because I realize you need time to prepare. But I would like to see something presented at the board in public regarding how to transact business with the district or how to provide, what our bid proposals look like and why would we even ask for one. But I would like a public presentation regarding that matter.
Good. Great idea.
Thanks.
Good job.
Thank you.
Now, if there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. The time is now 8:41 PM.
Thank you.
Good job.